This call to order, everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For everyone, please remain standing. I'd like to ask Reverend Cooper, please come and give us a prayer.
Let us look to the Lord. We thank you heavenly Father, and we glorify you, we magnify you, and we exalt you this evening. We thank you above all for your son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We thank you for this another opportunity, for coming for your throne of grace for the city of Inkster. We ask heavenly Father that you would bless the mayor, our Honorable Mayor Byron Nolan, all the council members, all the police, and all the citizens that are here today. We pray that we might decrease and you increase in us, for we realize we can do nothing without you. We pray heavenly Father that we be the city that you're calling for in these last and evil days, and we will be so ever careful to give you all the praise and all the honor and all the glory. For it is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen and thank God.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Watley.
Present.
Councilman Oden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
You're here, Mayor Pro Tem Williams. You're here today.
Uh, yeah.
And we have seven present and we do have a quorum.
Okay. Everyone have a chance to look at the agenda? We're gonna add one more under the presentations. Jean Overman, supposed to go in the orientation meeting.
Thank you.
Didn't make it. And we, remember we had item G, street closure. Anything else we need to add or omit? We added Jean Overman under presentations.
Jean Overman under presentation.
See?
Why? It's not, it's not...
We have a motion to approve the agenda? Don't move. Okay, has it moved twice? You've got a second. Second. All right, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? I'm just glad Connie Mitchell can do.
I just said I'm not moving on second to anything tonight. I had such a hard time.
All right, before we get rolling, Glenn Anderson in house? Come on up Glenn. Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson.
Thank you Mayor, and good evening council members and citizens. I just wanted to give you a, I'll give you a quick update on what's been going on at the county level. We have a number of things that are before us, including of course the, the big elephant in the room, the Wayne County Jail proposal and Justice Center. Three contractors are in the process of being hired to do inspections of all county bridges. We, all of us that have noticed our bridges, they're, some of them are forty, fifty, sixty years old, and even older in some places. After this is done, the county will determine the priority of bridge repairs based on the condition and the amount of traffic and the weight that they need to carry. Federal grant will be paying, we received a federal grant for a study of improvement plan for Nankin Lake, which is part of the Heinz Park. This one is, particular lake is at Ann Arbor Trail and Heinz Drive. We're still in the process, as I mentioned, of reviewing the, and the analysis of our staff, legal staff and policy staff, of the ten remaining agreements between the county and Dan Gilbert's multiple companies related to the new Justice Center that includes the new jail. This year, I wanted to announce that I'll be bringing back, I think I mentioned it the last time I was here, but this will probably be the last time before the event actually takes place. I'm bringing back a senior appreciation pasta dinner. It'll include dinner, dessert, entertainment, and door prizes, and it's totally free for seniors sixty and older. And it'll be at Burton Manor on Schoolcraft Road in Livonia. It's on Wednesday, June thirteenth at 5:00 PM. As I mentioned, it's a free event for seniors that live in the 12th Commission District, which includes all of Garden City, all of Inkster, most of Westland, basically down to Palmer Road. And those wishing to attend must RSVP by calling or emailing my office. The phone number is 313-224-8855, and the email is district12@wayncity.com. Seating is limited to the first three hundred people that RSVP. Continuing, we have contacted, I know there's an issue with lighting in some of our major roads, DTE, and this was in, particularly in Garden City, both sides of the road from, I believe it's from Ford Road all the way down to Cherry Hill with no lights. I'm also going to see what I can do about getting the grass cut on Michigan Avenue. I'm not, we have different responsibilities. The county has some sections, the state has other sections. So I'm gonna try to get to the bottom of that tomorrow, but hopefully we'll get it done before the parade next week. Last item I'll mention is that my last Inkster Coffee Hour for the summer will be Monday, June eleventh at noon, at the same location, the Family Health Center, Resource Center. There'll be no Coffee Hour in July or August, but it'll resume on the second Monday in September for the remainder of the year. And if there's any questions, I'll try to answer those. I'm trying, I know you're trying to have a short meeting to get into a study meeting, but, in a closed session rather.
I've got one question.
Yes sir.
On Inkster Road, just near the Vidoq where the train is, the county put that nice brick paving there, I noticed that it's getting to fall apart.
Did you, you mean south of Michigan Avenue?
Yes.
Under the, I'll check it out, and we'll try to get some attention to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we got Jevion Johnson, Chief of Staff, or State Representative Joel Jones.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I hope everybody's doing well. I just want to bring greetings on behalf of State Rep Joel Jones, who is currently attending Garden City's council meeting. Really, really just brief and short, I would love to have you guys support again as State Rep runs for reelection this year. August seventh is the primary. We're hoping to have everyone out and about, helping our volunteers, making them feel comfortable as they walk around the neighborhoods. So if you do see anybody with the Joel Jones shirt, please say hello, throw them some water or something like that. We greatly, we greatly appreciate it. Yeah, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, presentation.
Of Mayor.
Who'd I miss?
Mary.
Oh, come on up. I'm sorry, I didn't see you there, I'm sorry.
You just walked in. Hello, everyone.
Hi.
I'm Mary Waters, and I'm a candidate for 13th District Congress to fill the vacancy for John Conyers. Now, here's the catch to the part that I'm running for. It is to fill the unexpired term. That means that if I should be fortunate enough to get elected, I would be serving for two months. It should be much longer than that had a special election been called, but it wasn't. And so, in the spirit of John Conyers and his job justice and peace thing that he talked about for many, many years, I will, my name, Mary Waters, will be on the ballot. So I'm not gonna stand here and give a speech, I understand that you're going into closed session and all that good stuff, but I do have some information here that I'd like to leave with people here at the meeting tonight. And for those who are, who are not here tonight, I would like to just say you can reach me Or marywaters313@gmail.com. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go to the presentations. We have a DDA survey findings presentation by Connie R. Mitchell, Councilwoman District Six. Good evening.
I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, but I will ask, it can be placed on our city website, so that if you want to look at it further and in more detail, you'll have an opportunity to do that. During a DDA meeting, I discovered that we had no strategic plan for revitalizing our downtown area. So I suggested, and once you suggest you chair, take the strategic plan committee, and we have worked very hard to this point to get some survey results out. It really turned into a sampling as opposed to a survey because we didn't get as many participants in the survey as we wanted, but I think, based on what you will see, the information is very, very important, interesting, exciting, and accurate. These were the people who sat in that first meeting, and thanks to Father Clifton, who's still here, yes. He said, "Before we do anything, let's find out what the people want." So that was what started us on the journey of completing the survey. But this is our vision statement. We think the city will have an exciting, busy, trendy, and sustainable downtown, featuring vibrant, attractive, and sustainable business enterprises, and other venues that would attract citizens, visitors, businesses. Oh, can't hear me? School teacher? It's okay. Now, we can do this, look at the picture. Isn't that exciting, colorful, busy? I think Inkster can do this, and we're going to do this, but notice what's capitalized? We, right? Okay.
Ooh, look at that.
Yeah, I do some stuff like that sometimes. Here was the goal of our survey, to use the survey as a starting point for the development of a strategic plan, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, to rebuild our downtown Inkster. If any of you in this audience are residents of Inkster since way back, you can remember what downtown Inkster looked like, and it was quite amazing what I have seen and pictured. So our first objectives was, objective was to survey the citizens, check mark, check mark, and our second objective was to share the results with city administration and the public, check mark. So we've done those three, those two things. Here's what happened to us. We had an economic downturn, we lost thanks to public schools district, which, believe it or not, will impact you negatively economically. A lack of planning for economic sustainability in the past, and a lack of attention paid to human trends and needs. That's all very important. So transversely, here's what's most important and exciting for me. We have renewed interest of cities, of citizens and city government, look at the audience, and it's like this every time we have a meeting. We have a change in our charter, which has provided us an opportunity to exercise a full-time mayor. The economy has upturned to President Obama. And a demonstration of creating sound practices and practices are being exercised by our city government. So, I'll skip this, I'll skip this, one day I'll go back to this. What are our available options? We're gonna create the strategic plan, one year, three years, five years, after that I'll be too tired to be bothered. But it has to be a one year, a three year, a five year to get us rolling and keep us rolling into the future. We're going to tap into trends. We gotta know what works, what doesn't work. We're gonna engage you, the citizens, in what we do and what we plan. We're gonna create a marketing plan. Mayor Nolan is already working on that. We're gonna develop a focus for downtown. Think about cities around you that have, when you say the name of the city, oh, I go to Art's Beats and Eats, I go to the art fair in Ann Arbor, I go to the Jazz Festival in Detroit. That's what we're gonna do for Inkster. Create a positive media campaign and find funding through governmental and other agencies. I heard Ford Foundation mention, yes. We were just a group of citizens who decided to come together and do this. We disseminated it to as many people as we could, and we got what we got in responses. So the idea was, what if you threw a party and nobody came? So we can't go downtown and put stuff up, and nobody wants to participate with it. So that's why we came to you. So what do the people want? First of all, most of the responders were women. Most people had lived in Inkster over twenty-five years. Most people were buying their homes. Most people had one person residing in the family, a single family home. Most people were sixty-five or older. Most people were, the gross income was thirty-five to forty-nine-nine thousands of dollars, but we did have some hundred thousand dollar folk. Most people are retired, but you do see that we have some other major areas of employment represented in the city. This is what, most of our residents who responded are high school graduates, but we have also voc ed graduates, we have college graduates and some with graduate degrees. Most people who responded were sixty or older. And here are the questions. What do you want to see in downtown Inkster? Do you see the longest bar? What does it say? I don't know why this, this one wouldn't change. Sit-down restaurants. The people who answered the survey said, "We wanna go somewhere nice and have a seat and be able to have a meal as a family, not have to rush in and rush out, or drive up to a window and pick out what we want." Although we love that, but there are other things that we want to do. I was surprised that people want a movie theater. We used to have one that went into something we were not pleased with, but we had one, maybe we can get one back. Festivals, that's why the Jazz Fest, well, they've, why did you stop? Jazz Fest, but that's why the Inkster Summer Fest is so important. People like that. Affordable summer concerts in the park. I've heard some rumblings about a venue in our downtown area that will do just that, in an outdoor recreation area, which the Parks and Recreation is doing, but I don't think in downtown, but maybe we can talk to them. There's some other things people wanted, art galleries, a voc ed center, local arts and culture theater companies to come in, a cultural arts facility, entrepreneurship facility. What kinds of general services are needed, and would you patronize in downtown Inkster? What's the biggest one? Grocery store. They want a grocery store, and that's something we can truly look at and work on, I'm quite sure. There were other things on the list. I thought it would be nice to have a bookstore in downtown Inkster, electronic store, someone even mentioning an operation of music and CDs, which we used to have. So there are lots of things that other people, people who ran to the survey, thought, a computer cafe, another bank, and so on, so on. In your opinion, what types of restaurants and evening places are needed in downtown Inkster, and would you patronize? Starting from the top, ethnic cuisine, healthy and natural foods, coffee houses, a bakery, and again, family-style dining is the winner. There are other suggestions for different kinds of places. They went from PF chains down to McDonald's. So anything is possible. There were even people who responded about health services, although health services may not be something you think about in a downtown area, who knows? Why would you not choose downtown Inkster service and business providers? One of the things that struck me is they said the buildings in downtown are drab and uninviting. We do have an ordinance that declares what your colors must be, but maybe we can put some colorful awnings up. And do some things like that, no bicycle lanes. No quick-stop lunch places. Downtown too dangerous at night, but when people come out, the danger goes down. Traffic density is inconvenient, speed limit too fast, too much traffic, a lack of convenient parking. They did say lack of police, too many low-end motels, drug trafficking places, but both of those issues are being addressed by the administration. So hopefully that will come off the list of reasons for not choosing downtown Inkster. Someone also suggested, street furniture. I noticed by these on Middle Belt, there's a bench that is... It must be for the bus, but people sit on that bench and just watch the traffic go by. So what if that happened on, in a downtown area? What do you think would enhance downtown's appearance? Improve the look of old abandoned buildings, attract the street light. Large pots of flowers are hanging planters, that's for our beautification committee, commission. Not just putting them in the ground, but putting large pots on the sidewalk, so that they're very visible in the city. Banners announcing city activities like the Inkster Fest. Sculptures along streets and medias. If you're aware, what's in Garden City, there are sculptures along their streets. We could do the same in Inkster and color it up. They also want you to keep our historical buildings intact and enhance them. What other attributes would encourage you to patronize us? An internet hotspot, an area for a park, business owners making their property attractive, that's real important. And I agree one hundred percent with that. And a walking police presence. Our policemen used to be able to walk the neighborhoods, walk the city streets. Perhaps once we get our number of police officers up, or... They change the way they do some things. We can begin to have that as downtown grows. Again, the outside dining, bike racks, lofts along the Rouge River, a tiny house community that Pro Tem Williams is gonna be mayor of. We've been teasing him about that for the last, I don't know how long, but that tiny house thing is quite the trend. And that's what we mean by looking at the trends in order to build your city. You can't just put stuff up, you gotta see what's going on, and what's successful in other places. Our next step is to start writing the strategic plan. We have the information that we need from our citizens and our business owners, and our people who work for us, and all we have to do now is use our master plan, the reinvent Inkster research, and the survey to begin to create the reality of downtown Inkster. So thank you.
Woo, thank you. I'd like to thank everybody involved for working on that presentation, it was a lot of good information. We're definitely gonna incorporate that into our strategic plan for downtown, which is being worked on as we speak. Okay, well next we're gonna have Carolyn Smith. Guess we got Father Clifton too, if he can get up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Is this on?
Yeah, it's on.
It's on, okay, good evening. So I am... Can I hear you? Cannot hear you? Is that better? Okay, good. So good evening, everyone. My name is Carolyn Smith. For those of you who do not know who I am, but at this time, I would like to have the other commissioners come up with me from the Inkster Housing Commission. Ms. Scott, Reverend Williams, Ms. Strohman, commissioners please.
We got a quorum here.
Yes. That's always the case in Inkster, whenever, wherever we go, we wear many hats. But, so I am the...
Forgot to post.
Huh?
Forgot to post.
Yes. So I am the chairperson for the Inkster Housing Commission, and at this time, we'd like to provide you all with a special introduction, and so I'm going to let Commissioner Clifton take the mic at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, honorable servants of the city of Inkster, and members of this beloved community of Inkster. Less than a year ago, the Inkster Housing Board of Commissions adopted a new vision statement. In that statement, we envisioned a housing community that would, in time, be recognized as an innovative agency, working to facilitate the development of progressive community living. We seek to utilize all available resources effectively to improve the living conditions of those persons living in public housing, to develop innovative programs through partnerships with local community-based organizations, nonprofits, and community of faiths, as long, as well as our community government entities, to encourage self-sufficiency and personal growth. And we also seek to enhance the community life within the city of Inkster by maintaining attractive, well-managed housing sites and residential facilities, run by professional and courteous staff. To see this vision become a reality, the Board of Commissioners has been going about the task of putting together a top-tier team of dedicated and qualified individuals who will work diligently to bring the Inkster Housing Commission boldly into the 21st century. This evening, the Board of Commissioners would like to formally introduce to you the newest member of this team, Mr. Paul Bolinger, who has been called to serve as our interim executive director. A little bit about him. Mr. Bolinger is a highly qualified and well-respected servant in the field of public housing. He has had hands-on, visionary, and various administrative responsibilities while serving as an employee of public housing, as a deputy director or an executive director of various public housing commissions, and as a management specialist for the Department of Housing and Urban Development Detroit Field Office. His list of references is impressive. Paul Bolinger possesses a vision for public housing in Inkster that is compatible with that of the Board of Commissioners. This vision added to his natural love of people, his knowledge of current governmental regulations and trends, successful service and leadership in all positions associated with public housing that he served in, his stated belief in servant leadership, together with our shared desire to change the imprint of public housing on the community of Inkster, makes him an ideal choice to lead the Housing Commission during this time of transition and growth. As a Board of Commissioners, we don't mind also sharing with you that the service that he's given to us in the past two weeks has been impressive indeed. During this brief time of his leadership, we have noticed a welcome change in the work climate, in community living, and in organizational structure. Citizens of Inkster, Mr. Mayor, City Council, we invite you to celebrate the ongoing transition that is happening in the Inkster public housing community. We are prayerfully optimistic that everyone will be ecstatic about the future developments as they happen, and we are prayerfully hopeful that everyone will support the dedicated work and service of Mr. Paul Bolinger. And now it is my pleasure to present on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Paul Bolinger.
Well, I don't know how you follow that. Thank you very much, I greatly appreciate it. I have had the opportunity to work with a number of housing authorities or commissions from Toledo to as far west as Las Vegas. So very excited and happy to be back home. My wife and I both live here in, well, Westland area, so very excited to be back home, very excited to be working with this, this board, who has really set a bar for Inkster housing, but the resources are here, the opportunities are here, and as a community, if we can come together and support what we're trying to do, I think you will see a huge change in public housing here in Inkster, as well as our Housing Choice voucher program that services Wayne County. So looking forward to working with everyone here, and again, I will get out in the community and be able to meet and talk with everyone, so please feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Before you sit down, Paul, I would also like to bring our resident council president and vice president up too as well. They're always so very supportive, they're very diligent about the work that they do with the housing authority, and I want to make sure that I... And I want to make sure that I acknowledge them as well too. Mr. Carter and Ms. Moore work so hard with the residents. And I just wanna let you all know that they share in the vision as well as it relates to Inkster housing. And without further ado, I'd like to also present to you, Paul, a few tokens, if you will, to hang into your office, okay? Don't worry, I won't take them all out and read them. But if you'll hold the mic for, well. All right, so from the- Think anybody hear me, okay? Commission Board of Commissioners, the resident council, we present these to you. Paul, can you stand in front of me, please? There you go. Items to you, and we're so grateful to have you. Thank you so much, thank you, everyone. You can have a seat now.
Carolyn, everybody up here is wondering where our gifts are.
Okay, next time, okay? Next time, next time, okay? It's gonna be all right.
All right. Last presentation is Jean Overman. Operation Refuge.
So am I using this, which mic?
Take your pick.
Okay. Can you hear me?
No.
Yes, yes. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Jean Overman, excuse me.
She's only three feet tall.
Better leave that be. Okay, I'm Jean Overman, actually here today as executive director for Operation Refuge. And as we noticed when we did the survey, that one of the major issues here in Inkster is the fact that a grocery store in a food desert is how we're classified in Wayne County. So I'm here because we wanna talk about partnership. I was actually in a listening session over at Fish and Loaves, and one of the pantries was there from Melvindale. And they said, "We have a partnership with our city." And I know in Taylor, they have a partnership with the city. So I'm here to have that conversation with us. We thought we would have more time. I do not wanna be something that you're hearing and not listening to. So when we have more time to really bring this, I think it'll be beneficial that I send you this package ahead of time to read over, because I know most of you are aware, actually, many of you have served. Connie, thank you for your team that comes so often to Mother's Pantry and work. And you are totally aware of the work we do. I don't know if many of you are aware that I'm on the National Feeding America Policy Council. So it's not just something I do here in Inkster. But I understand the food disparities around the country. So Jennifer, you know, has like a million words. You guys all know that. So she's gonna bring a few of those. And Priya standing here is our reinforcement. So we really want you to hear what we're saying. Think about how to have not so much financial impact, although we do want that, but the MOU and the agreement that food disparity and those that are hungry in Inkster matters to council. We're in District Three located, but we serve Inkster and all surrounding communities Mother's Pantry do. We serve over 500,000 pounds of food a year. We had like forgotten harvest clearly over 70,000. Our partners bring in so much food. We use all of this, and unlike many nonprofits, 100% of what we receive go to food and programs. So we don't have paid staff. We have volunteers that really serve. So Jen, if you wanna use some of your many words.
Only a half a million.
Okay.
I know you're counting. So, good evening, everyone. My name again is Jennifer Williams, here on behalf of Operation Refuge, Mother's Pantry. We're located in the heart of the city with the city in our heart. So I was recently in a conversation with someone a few days ago, and they were telling me that people only hear about 5% of what you're saying. So I'm gonna, in my 5 million words, or a half a million words, I'll let you know the 5% I really need for you to listen to today. Mother's Pantry is a client-choice food pantry, is a model emergency food distribution that enables clients to select their own food, much like a grocery store. Mother's Pantry has provided to those in need for over 15 years. The plight of those in need is greater than any, any individual should have to ever face alone. Part of our mission at Mother's Pantry, Food Pantry, is to help those in need in facing food insecurity, 5%. People are chronically depending on food pantries to feed themselves and their families. Food insecurity, the state of being without reliable access to sufficient quantity of affordable nutritious food. That definition comes from Feeding America, 5%. It is important to know that hunger and food insecurity are closely related, but distinct concepts. Hunger refers to a personal, physical sensation of discomfort. She's hungry right now. While food insecurity refers to a lack of available financial resources for food at the level of the household, 5%. Poverty and food insecurity in the United States are closely related. Not all people living below the poverty line experience food insecurity. And people living above the poverty line can experience food insecurity. For those of you who may have students away at college, when they come home and all their friends come home, that pack of chicken doesn't go as far anymore, does it? Wages and other critical household expenses such as caring for an ill child or a loved one can also help predict food insecurity among people living in the United States and here in our city. 5% to remember. Again, according to, according to the Hunger in America 2014 survey, many households, and that includes those here in Inkster, who visit charitable food programs such as our pantry, have to make difficult choices in order to meet basic needs. What are some of those choices? Food or medicine, 74%. Food or utilities, 59%. Food or transportation, 67%. Food or housing, 57%. Oftentimes, households must use many coping strategies in order to meet their food needs. These coping strategies may include receiving help from friends, 53%. Watering down food or drinks, 40%. Purchasing inexpensive, unhealthy food, 83%. And I'm sure that number is just about right there, especially when it comes to the city of Inkster with it being a food desert. Selling or pawning personal property to be able to eat. Growing food in a garden. In fact, giving is the only start that many people feel as if they're giving to a food pantry. Although giving is very important, it's much more important, important, what, I'm sorry, what is much more important is our commitment to the human welfare. 5% to remember. The commitment will surely bring about not only sporadic giving, but long-term giving, and involvement in innovative solutions to different social problems. As I conclude, how can pantries benefit our community? One, it reduces some of the pressure to the city by not needing to provide feeding programs for its residents in those facing food insecurities. It can reduce the infant mortality rate. It can satisfy the needs of the community. It frees up public dollars. It reduces, it reduces senior mortality. It frees up dollars so that community members can divert dollars to bills, taxes, household or car expenses. On average, Mother's Pantry sees 30 to 40 families a week, totaling 400 family members in the community and surrounding areas having food on their table. Clients receive on an average retail cost of foods totaling about $150 worth of food per visit, with an opportunity to visit twice a month, with an opportunity to visit twice a month for regular shopping and additional shopping on T-FAP days. Our clientele, in conclusion, our clientele ranges from seniors, seniors raising grandchildren, young mothers, single fathers, and a large population of our veterans. And I will conclude at that time, as we will send out more information on, as to what we're asking the city and how the city can help support the work that we're doing over at Mother's Pantry.
And we had a question that we wanted to ask each and every one of our council, mayor, administrators individually. And by the way, we got the funding for the roof, it is fixed. So I thought you wanna know that. But is hunger important to you, Mrs. Watley, for the citizens in Inkster?
Why do I have to be first?
You don't have to be first, but that's it, that's it.
Were you talking personally, or just other people being hungry?
Yes.
Of course it has to be, because hunger-
I think you're right. Is it important to you as an individual, as well as knowing Clarence could be hungry?
Yeah, and that's what you have to look at, because a lot of times, we think individually, which is one of our problems. We don't think as a whole. And so, Am I My Brother's Keeper loses us in the translation. So yes, it's important because it affects, impacts a lot of things. It impacts your, impacts your learning, your ability to learn.
Absolutely.
It impacts your ability to get jobs, it impacts a lot of things.
Absolutely.
Not just saying, "Oh, that guy is hungry." You have to look at the far-reaching-
So you have a large vision of what hunger looks like. What about you, Clarence? Is hunger important to you?
Are we really gonna go through?
Absolutely. Because it's very important to know, and you cannot give a long answer, just a yes or no. Because is, if hunger is not important to council and to our city, then it's okay.
I think it's important to all of us.
So can he answer for everyone?
Yes, I can.
Hunger is important because we just wanna know, because it's not fair to ask you to support something that's not of value to you. Like if you asked me, Jean, do you support kittens? My answer would be no.
What?
I'm putting, I, I don't have anything against kittens, I just don't do the-
Who doesn't like kittens?
Yeah, what kind of person is that?
There you go. It's the one who believes that everything I have has to go towards feeding children. I can't invest in the kittens. So I just wanted to know, for our city, do we think hunger is something to invest in? And I have a common yes, correct?
Hunger and humanity is important to me.
Thank you, sir. I know it is to you, Connie, you're always at the pantry.
But I, I wanna give you a little story.
Yes. Byron, we can hear that, uh-oh.
He knows what I'm gonna do anyway. When I was on the Board of Education for the city of Inkster Public School, a young man was caught stealing chicken nuggets from the kitchen.
Wow.
The principal wanted to expel him. But someone intervened and found out why.
He was hungry.
He was hungry. He was stealing the food to take home for the weekend to help feed his siblings.
That's right.
So hunger is a reality. We may look good on the outside, but you never know what's going on behind those closed doors.
That's right.
So yes, hunger is very important, and especially for me, for children. I, I hate the idea of any child being hungry.
That's right.
Thank you.
And if I can just add one thing, a lot of times there is a huge misnomer that those people are hungry because they did something wrong and they don't have, and they can do this.
They feel they do.
But please understand that we get many calls when people have lost their food, when the power has gone out, and they need their food replaced because they don't have time or the money. They've budgeted to buy this amount of food, and they've lost all their food. Power's been out, so we get calls, "We need food." So we're there to fill in the gap for those emergencies. Or when a child is dropped off at another parent's home and they're not prepared to receive that, we get those calls. Do you all have food? Or when a family is trying to prepare for a funeral or for a repast, and they don't have the means to supply that. So it's not just the "those people" and "those people didn't plan." Mother's Pantry, we really, we really do have the best interest of not only the citizens of Inkster, but we are really a pantry without borders. Need and hunger doesn't just stop when you, when you, where you sit or where you lay, so.
We'll send you more information. And of course, we didn't even have to ask the audience, because you're either there as a client or you're actually bringing and dropping off checks. And like Commissioner and his wife, they're always bringing cases of canned goods. So I know how you feel about hunger. I know those of us that are actually serving others. So we get it, we get it and we serve. So thank you so much for the presentation. I had a PowerPoint.
Oh, no. Okay. Everybody have a chance to look at it? We didn't do that, we're at the beginning. Any additions to leaves, anything we need to do, change? You have a motion?
No move.
Board, we properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Boards and commissions, any nominations?
Deborah Owen, who the, um, mission on age. June Patterson called me this. I don't think- Boards and commissions, that is one.
Okay. So you, you say you're not supposed to?
I don't know. She's not in District Five, she's in Two.
Oh.
She's not in District Five, she's in Two.
Okay.
I mean District Three.
Okay. So Clarence would have to do it? No, she's talking about Deborah Owen.
Oh, Deborah Owen.
Looking at the sheet, it is, I don't see anything where it says about districts on this one.
It doesn't. Okay. They're in large.
So you nominated, okay. Has everyone seen her bio or resume?
Yeah, she passed her bio out.
We already had it?
Yeah. She already had it.
Okay, y'all ready to vote? All right, somebody make-
I move.
We've properly moved and supported. Um, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Any other nominations? Okay, we're gonna move forward to previous business.
We have to remove from the table. We're removing from the table consideration and approval of the FY 2018, 2019 budget appropriations and water and sewer rates.
We have a motion to remove from the table?
A motion to remove it from the table?
Support.
We properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. We have a motion to approve the proposed budget.
So move.
Board, we properly moved and supported, discussion? Any changes? Want to cut the treasurer's salary? We can do it.
Said you want a motion to do it?
And he didn't put, he put all his hard work through it. Darren, don't stay here past 2 o'clock no more.
Any other?
He ain't past 2 o'clock.
Any questions?
No. He'd be here at 6:00 and 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night.
He don't get here till about 4:00 though.
Can we stop this?
The clerk's office calls him goat.
Any other discussion on the budget? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Okay, goat. Item A is consideration and approve, excuse me, consideration and approval of an investment policy. So move.
Board, we properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Passes. Tell them to protest.
Item B is consideration and approval of administration to approve the contract with Florence Cement Company for Annapolis Road construction and the amount, as duly noted, and a 15% contingency, as duly noted, for a total amount. An additional $189,878 will be required to cover the cost of construction, engineering, field design, modifications, inspection, material, testing of concrete, laboratory testing, and the removal, removal of relocation and replacement of some utility poles, for a total cost as duly noted. So move.
Support.
We properly moved and supported, discussion? I see some interesting looks on the faces.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes.
This additional $189 will be required to cover the cost of construction, engineering. This isn't the same thing as the NOCH. We discussed last year, the last time, the $100,000 they're being paid.
It's a different project completely.
But it's, so totaling for the engineers is $289,000.
It looks, oh, that's two, for two projects?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, up to. Oh, that's just two projects.
Injust, there's no just about.
There's more. I mean, a water, a basin, we spend a lot of money on engineering.
And this is something else we should, finding out, because we have no comparable, our engineering.
We're gonna address-
Whatever they, whatever they give us is what we take, so.
No, 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 we're gonna address that. I heard you loud and clear when we talked about it before. So we're gonna address that in the new RFP. We're gonna send RFP, we're gonna have more than one engineering firm onboard, so we can use whoever we want to as needed. And basically, they can bid on each, on each project and bid against each other. Make sure we have some competitive, you know, bids. Anything else on this? Just big numbers, huh? Okay.
One million dollars, that's a lot of money.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
It passes.
Item C, consideration and approval of an offer to purchase two vacant residential lots which are located on the west side of Williams between Beach and Chestnut. And are legally described as duly noted in the amount of five hundred dollars to Robert Payden Jr.
So move.
Board, we properly moved and supported discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Item D, consideration and approval to assist to help sponsor the 2018 Inkster Community-wide twenty-year Inkster Summer Fest and waive departmental fees.
Do you have a motion? Come on, protest, make a motion.
In and of.
I can't vote. I can make a motion.
All right, do you have a second?
Who motioned it?
Mayor.
But he can't.
Yes, I can. I can make a motion, but I can't vote.
No second? Okay, it dies.
Item E, consideration and approval of a special land use for a used car dealership located at two-six, two-six-six Michigan Ave. In the B-three General Business District with the conditions noted per the recommendations of the Planning Commission. Nabill Ismail is the applicant.
Do you have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair?
Support.
We probably move and support a discussion.
Uh, yes, um, the, the planner has specific things for, for this, um, call out to do. Uh, is there a timeframe where, where it needs to be done?
Sure. So if this was approved, uh, this evening, then they would have, uh, six months, uh, to get to the, the final site plan approval. Cause this is the preliminary site plan approval tonight. Uh, sorry, not site plan approval, but, uh, this would be for the special land use tonight. Which would then start the clock running on the preliminary site plan approval. They would need to, um, get the final site plan approval within six months. And then after that, they have another six months to, uh, basically, uh, get to the, the building department stage and start pulling building permits.
So this can be next year, sometime in May, that we'll actually see the improvements?
Uh, potentially. We hope they move faster. So I'm, that would be the longest amount of time they would have. But they, they could potentially get their final site plan approval, uh, a month from now. They're actually in very good shape.
So they have to come back to the planning commission for the, with the site plan?
No.
No. That's done administratively.
We already proved the site.
Is the, is the building for, for the wall?
Yeah.
For the wall and the landscaping.
Um, were there any special conditions approved? I can't recall. First one, Mary Ann?
You're asking about the, the project that was approved in 2015?
Yeah, it, were there any? I mean.
Well, the, the special conditions associated with 2015 that carried over to the 2018, uh, special land use included the, the three and a half foot green belt, uh, along Michigan Avenue with the decorative fence. Uh, that was the, the big condition that carried over, uh, from that site plan and special land use.
Okay, when you say carried over, they were supposed to and didn't, or what?
So it was approved in, in 2015, but then that site plan expired, so they never did that. And actually, I think that was, I believe that was even approved, although I'd have to check the records. I believe that was actually even approved as part of the 2010 site plan. That there was supposed to be a three and a half foot green belt along Michigan plus a decorative fence. Now, uh, that 2010 site plan had a different owner that brought that to the Planning Commission. So when the new owner took over in 2015, they basically inherited that site condition, uh, from the previous approval.
Any other discussion?
So right now, uh, they have too many cars in the lot right, right now?
So it's very likely that they have too many cars in the lot right now. I know that one of the code enforcement officers, uh, did stop by there and, uh, said that there were, I think they left, but I, I think it, it's overparked by about ten cars. Oh, you are here. Okay. So there were thirty-two cars parked in the lot and there's supposed to be a total of twenty-two. That being said, the striping plan that we're approving as part of the site plan is slightly different than the current configuration, but it's definitely overparked at the moment.
So now that they need to move ten of those cars, ten of those cars now?
So if, if this is approved tonight, I would highly advise that they move ten of those cars tomorrow, basically.
But they're not on this prior to this? Means that they need to still move those cars?
No, 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 yeah. That's code enforcement can go take it down tomorrow, today, tomorrow, anytime they want to, cause they're old. So that's just more of an enforcement.
Oh, okay, I see, but no, but to understand that we don't have to wait two weeks. Okay, just for them to move the cars?
No, I, one has nothing to do with it. We just talked about it because I, I hear you guys concerned that people are breaking the rules and now they asking us to approve something. Are we giving them?
This is a new owner, right?
Yes.
It's a new owner as of 2015. And in regards to the, the cars, uh, if this is approved tonight, now the pla, the site plan would say you can only have a total of thirty-three parking spaces. Um, twenty-two of which can be for display vehicles and, uh, and the other eleven have to be kept open for customers.
We gonna have a timeframe. Timeframe when they have to, have to remove the cars. Think you talked about ten being removed. Somebody gonna follow up and make sure they move within a certain timeframe.
That's up to code.
That's, that's, that's for code enforcement, but they're going to start enforcing tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
You need to know that.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, definitely. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
It passes.
Item F, consideration and approval of a special land use for a proposed medical marijuana processing facility. Or should that be? And cultivation facility to be located in a multi-use development on Trow Bridge Avenue in the M-one Light Industrial District. The, as, and with the conditions noted per the recommendation of the Planning Commission, Harvey Weiss and Ronald Shania are the applicants.
So move, Mr. Chair?
Board, we properly moved and supported discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
It passes.
And item G is, um, consider approving the request for a street closure of Andover between Button and Byrne Streets, May twenty-fourth, 2018, for a black party from three PM until nine-thirty PM. The applicant is Bishop Walter Sturgill.
Do you have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair. Uh, with the question, the street is Burton.
Oh, thank you. He had Burton on his paper.
What was that street again?
Burton, Burton, Burton in Andover.
There's a motion. We need a second. Do you have a second?
Board.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Okay. Sure, Shirley Hankerson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and viewing audience. Um, I would like to invite everyone out on June the second, which is a Saturday, from twelve to two. Um, the NAACP as well as NAN, we're gonna be sponsoring a, um, forum for all the candidates that are running for the thirteenth district seat that was vacated by Con, by, um, Conyers. Um, it's gonna be at Direct Center. Again, that's gonna be Saturday, June the second, from twelve to two.
Well, June, that's two weeks.
Two weeks now.
Okay. What time is it?
Twelve to two.
Twelve to two.
All right. Mabel Strom.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm just here to ask a question. When are we gonna have our library open again? I've had too many citizens ask the question. Where is the library?
As you know, the library is a separate entity from the city. Um, we do have a couple of library commissioners here. Uh, they're welcome to come on up and talk, or they can address you personally, or however they wanna do it.
Well, I went to the meeting, but. I didn't get satisfaction at the meeting, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Father Clifton.
Thank you. As you know, about four years ago, uh, Saint Clements Episcopal Church, along with the Boy Scout, uh, Boy Scouts of America and the Police Department reestablished scouting in the city of, uh, of Inkster. Uh, for the past two years, we've had a very successful week-long day camp for the young people in Inkster, boys and girls, uh, together at the church. This year, uh, the camp will happen in the month of August. The dates escape me right now. But on June the seventh, we are having our kickoff breakfast to raise money for this venture. Um, it's gonna be held at the Booker Dozier Recreation Center, seven o'clock in the morning, and everyone is invited to attend. We're asking for your donations. We're not selling tickets this year. Our goal for Inkster, uh, I thought was three thousand, but I understand now it's been raised up to thirty-eight hundred dollars for Inkster. After a highly successful talk with, uh, several entities and community stakeholders, we've already raised about fifteen hundred dollars of that. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your personal donation on that and, uh, along with the Bishop of the Diocese of Michigan and Councilman Chisholm. Uh, but, uh, we, uh, would like to invite everyone to that, um, uh, to that breakfast, June seventh, seven o'clock AM at the Booker Dozier Center. Bring your checkbooks, please.
Thank you. It's gonna be an expensive breakfast. Okay, Madam Clerk.
No comments tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Treasurer?
All right, no comments.
Who do we start with?
No comments.
No comment?
Hey, everyone, we went out riding, uh, this past Wednesday. I just added the city clerk to the email list. She's got her bike. She will be joining us. So I hope that you all go out and get your bikes and ride with us. It was fun. I was tired after the fact and, hey, that means we rode quite a little way, so appreciate your support.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Uh, just a reminder that Monday, the twenty-eighth, is the Memorial Day Parade. We start staging at ten AM. And, uh, the par, uh, parade starts promptly at, uh, noon. We look forward to seeing all of you there.
Councilman Olden.
Uh, yeah, uh, Mayor, I got a question concerning the grass cutting. Uh, I know we were talking about, um, iron or putting together. I'm wondering where, where we are with that because getting high all the way across the city.
And it keeps raining every day, too.
Right, right.
So we're not making any progress, that's for sure. Um, I know we hired some new folks. I think, where'd Gina go? She left? We, we talk, we talk touch base with her every day, but we, we've hired several new people. We've ordered some additional equipment. So if it ever stops raining, we'll be able to get out there and, and get going.
Will, will this include the homes that are vacant, that the city does not own as well?
Yep.
Okay, because there's a lot of those that's really piling up. And my next question is related to the, um, to the contractors that we're talking about dealing with for the trash pickup.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I know you're sort of dealing with that and, you know, it'll be a little while before they get started. My question is related to, within the different districts, we, we, we're talking about the dumping. I'm, I'm continuing to find a number of mattresses and so forth, people putting it on the side of the curb. So will they be dealing with that, or we're gonna have to have somebody else to deal with?
Well, no, the, their contract starts July first, and their policy is different than Republic's. So if you set it out on the curb, they pick it up. So we won't have the same problem. Republic only picked up things that were in the actual trash can. But I believe they said they will pick up anything that's set out. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So which is one of the positive things, positive changes we'll be having in our garbage.
Okay, good. I'm, I'm.
Well, right, right, right.
I'm, I'm glad to hear that. But, but, so that basically means that those houses that, that, that's out there now with mattresses and those things like that have to wait until we get to.
Oh, no, no, no. You just give us the address. Mr. Vines will go over there and pick that up. You ain't gotta worry about it. Soon as he get through that garage, he's gonna pick up the mattress.
That, that's the reason why. Yeah, but I, I. Okay, good. I'll, I'll just, yeah, okay, I'll do that. Okay. Thanks a lot.
All right.
Now, the last question I have is related to the, the overtime bar, uh, on Michigan Avenue.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I'm wondering what is happening with that. It seems like it's sitting there and just sort of.
It's falling apart.
It's deteriorating.
It's leaning a little bit.
Right.
Um, the original plan was, it was purchased, uh, so we sold it to, uh, Mr. Jenkins, was it a year and a half ago, something like that?
Yeah.
Now, since we've decided to redevelop downtown, the developer wants that property also. So essentially, we, we have to negotiate something between the developer and Mr. Jenkins to buy that property. He wants to bulldoze it instead of, cause he wants to redevelop, make that part of the redevelopment of downtown. So we, we need to negotiate that, cause Mr. Jenkins was gonna renovate it. Now, he didn't renovate it all that fast, cause we still talking about it. But, uh, it, it actually probably works out for the better for us. Hopefully.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Um, this one thing, can I tell them about the, uh, we have those four people that pick up big things in garbage. I mean, we're paying them. We might as well utilize them.
That's what, that's what business is. Councilwoman Mitchell.
Uh, good evening, again. I don't know if I said it last week, but I'd like to thank Reverend and Barbara Cooper for the opportunity to come to their station and be on their radio program a couple of Sundays ago. It was exciting and all I talked about was what? Inkster. And how we're moving right along, doing great things. So thank you for that opportunity. I do appreciate it. I had a good time. I would also like to say to the public, thank you, thank you, thank you for your support of the Ink Town Derby. People are still talking about it. I get a phone call and somebody mentions it. I see someone and they mention it. The task force was very happy to be able to do this. I think we all made new friends. We had an opportunity to come together and see who's who and do different things. So thank you so much for your support. And I'm just going to assume that we're going to do it again next year. I recently attended a Wayne County Resource Conference. It was a mini-conference, and I passed the information on to the DDA. Uh, there are a number of resources available to us to get money and to get support, and so I wanted to make sure that I went so that I could cash in on that information and pass it on to, uh, those who can use it for the city's improvement. The Strategic Plan Committee will meet on May thirtieth in the Tiffer Room at six o'clock PM. And this is open to any citizen that wants to participate or, or employer, whoever, just come at six o'clock on May thirtieth. The hard work starts now, and, um, we'll need all the hands that we can get to help us complete it successfully. You've heard me talk about the Henry Ford Community College classes, and in my last meeting, I hit upon an idea that we do have a lot of people who reside in the city of Inkster who are qualified to teach college classes. Why not make it an entire Inkster thing, um, and have those people who are interested become adjunct professors for Henry Ford Community College? The, a program that we are offering will be business, uh, enterprise, and entrepreneurship. And if you are interested in becoming an adjunct professor, uh, please just let me know and we'll go through the records of getting your resume and all those important documents, and, um, we'll set up classes in the city, and we'll be on the road with that. I'm so excited about it. The first class is going to be held on June twenty-sixth. The first class is going to be held on June twenty-sixth, uh, at the Woodson Resource Center on Carlisle, at Middle Belt. The class will be a grant-writing class, and the cost will be twenty-five dollars, and it will be taught by a professor from, uh, Henry Ford Community College. I know I will be in the class, and I'm sure some of you others would like to attend too. Uh, so that's, uh, some of the classes, we're looking for teachers, uh, business, entrepreneurship, graphic design, marketing, uh, and those kinds of classes. I have the full schedule of classes, so once you inform me that you're interested, we'll talk and, um, see what we can do to make you an adjunct.
What time?
Of what? The class starts at five o'clock. Thank you.
Yes, okay. Mayor Pro tip?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Reverend Cooper for coming in and giving us a prayer today. I also like to thank the AKA and the Capra for turning, they came out, uh, Saturday for spring cleaning, and they went up to the mall, parked throughout the city, and they did a very, very nice job, and, and you see, they went over to, uh, the complex, uh, we got some different colored doors over there now. So you gotta go there and check it out, but. That was who?
Five Beta Sigma.
Oh, Five Beta Sigma? Not the Capers, okay. Okay, thanks for that correction.
That means the Capers were there.
Okay. So while they were there, I had a little small chat with them, and, cause I wondered, where are, where are the guys at most of the time, cause, oh, what'd you see, the AKA, or, or the women here in the city that's doing stuff all the time? Uh, some of them, well, majority of them live in Detroit, but there was like two or three of them, their, their hometown here, is here in Inkster. This is, anytime we need them, give them a call, and they'll be right here to, come help us out. And I'd like to also thank Inkster Housing, uh, I went to their meeting last week and asked them, could District One use the Floyd B Simmons Building for, uh, District One's, uh, voting poll? And they agreed. So we'll thank you on behalf of District One. And the next thing is shop Inkster. Thank you.
Okay, this past Saturday, we had, uh, Eric Sabree held a workshop, foreclosure workshop to help give people information and options to save their homes. We had about ten, twelve people, I think, homeowners show up, uh, we have over three hundred in the city, so would you please spread the word for folks you may know may be in trouble to, uh, either call the Wayne County Treasurer's Office, Eric Sabree, or you can call the City Clerk's Office, and we'll give them that number, uh, so they can get the information they need to try to save their homes. Last year, we went door-to-door, weren't able to do that, this year they changed their policy be, because of some safety concerns. So I just wanna make sure we can do what we can to get the word out. Um, also, this week, Saturday, is my mother's birthday, so wish her a happy birthday. It's a big one, I think it's, should we tell her age? Seventy-five, seventy-five.
Did he really do that?
Don't, don't wait till the weekend to say happy birthday, because she'll be in Jamaica. Veterans, rededication of the Veterans Memorial will be here at City Hall right after Memorial Day Parade next Monday, which I hope to see everybody at, everybody listening, we have to come out and support the parade. A lot of work goes into it, of course Sandra Wiley did it all. Um, so we wanna make sure we support, come out and have a good time. Um, so I think, I think, 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 that's it. All right, so we will, everybody have a safe Memorial Day weekend, and we'll see you Monday at the parade.
Much for adjournment.
Support.
Thanks.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.